Thank you. So I will begin with a notice and instruction. The notice is in reference to the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board certifications pursuant to gubernatorial proclamation by John Bell Edwards in 2020 regarding board member participation by telephone or video conference as it relates to school board meetings. Please be advised that due to the public health emergency caused by the coronavirus disease, also known as COVID-19, and the stay-at-home orders issued by the President Trump and Governor Edwards, the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board may for the duration of this emergency conduct board meetings and committee meetings electronically via telephone and/or video conference. The committee of the whole meeting scheduled for today, July 9, 2020, immediately following the board workshop is streamlined via Microsoft Teams. A link to watch the meeting can be found at boarddocs located on the school board's website. A period of written public comment will be provided before the board meeting, as well as before each action is taken by the board on an action item. Individuals wishing to make a public comment about any of the posted action items will need to click on the agenda items in boarddocs and submit via highlighted public comment hyperlink on the agenda item details. Upon the closing of the comments, board president will, or vice president will read in the record the public comments that have been submitted. Alright, that is our notice and instructions. To now, I will call to order the July 9 Committee of the Whole Meeting. At this time, Madam Secretary, would you please conduct the roll?
President, I'm sorry, District 7, President Goday?
Here.
District 3, Vice President Howard?
Present.
District 1, Mr. Blue?
Here.
District 2, Mr. Lannis?
Here.
District 4, Ms. Collins? Ms. Collins? Or Mark is here because we can see her. Ms. Ware Jackson, District 5?
Here.
District 8, I'm sorry, District 6, Ms. Dyson? District 8, Ms. Bernard? Ms. Bernard? District 9, Mr. Tatman?
Present.
Thank you, Ms. April, Ms. Armin. We have a call. Our first item that we will receive is item number C1, and we will receive it as information only. It is an update from our superintendent. Mr. Drake?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Howard. First, I would like to welcome two new principals to the East Baton Rouge Parish School principalships. They are first, Mr. Robert Signator, who will become the interim principal of Glen Oaks High School. He was formerly the assistant principal at Glen Oaks High School. And also, Mr. Rodney Coates, who was formerly the assistant principal at McKinley High School, will now become the principal of the EBR Readiness Middle School. And he was formerly at McKinley High School. So congratulations to Robert Signator, interim principal at Glen Oaks High, and Rodney Coates, interim principal of EBR Readiness Middle School. Just FYI, I'd like you to know that end-of-course retesting begins next Monday, July 13, at five of our high schools. I want to thank our school and district staff who've worked very hard, pulled this together for our students following the guidance of the State Department of Education, and we wish our students the best of luck on these state exams that begins next Monday. Also, there's a new charter school opening this year in our district. We'd like to welcome CSAL Elementary Charter into our family of schools. Staff is supporting their onboarding process currently, and they will be open in August. They will be adjacent to the middle school campus, serving students in grades A through 2. So welcome, CSAL Elementary Charter. The reopening school plan, we've been working on it very hard. I want to welcome Leslie Brown, our new superintendent. I think she's listening tonight, and she's been working with our staff for the last several weeks and has actually led the senior cabinet meetings over the last three meetings, I believe. The guidance for reopening is coming very soon. And I just want to thank Ms. Brown for all the leadership she's provided here over the last couple of weeks in this transition. I think we'll have a strong continuation in our district. A strong start is started Monday of this week. Just to give you a few data points, 70 schools are participating, 42 school partnerships, we have 652 teachers and 53 paraprofessionals working with close to 6,000 students in the traditional ESS, ESL gifted and magnet programs. And finally, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Ronit Robinson. She is a 4th and 5th grade teacher at the Deuce Rock School. She is the recipient of the National University System Sanford Teacher Award for Louisiana. That is the only one in the state. They pick a big state. Oh, Ms. Ware Jackson. Robinson. She will save $10,000 to support her cause. And the Sanford Teacher Award for Louisiana and one free state focuses on teachers who develop social and emotional skills in their school. She is now eligible to win $50,000 towards her program. So that is all. Thank you.
Mr. Howard, your mic is not on.
Is it good now?
Yeah.
Okay, for whatever reason, my computer has a delay in it. Sorry about that. So we will move on to our next item. Our next item is a item for consideration. It is a grant. The recommended action is a consideration of a request for the approval for the following grants: The Painted Playground Community Partner Grant between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the Junior League of Baton Rouge in the amount of $20,000 for elementary school beautification. An early childhood, excuse me, Strong Start COVID-19 Community Relief Grant in the amount of $400,000 to provide assistance to childcare assistance centers. May I entertain a motion? I see a motion by Mr. David Tatman and a second by Ms. Evelyn Ware Jackson. Are there any comments from the board, questions from the board? Mr. Lannis?
I'm sorry, I won't be long. Ms. Okowski, are you available? Are you on right now?
I am here.
I just had a really quick question. The grant of the beautification of the elementary schools, they're going to be spread out across multiple campuses?
Yes, they have not been selected yet. And what we typically do is, and for the help of Ms. Lynn Williamson, to help us evaluate and assess the play areas of our schools. And we try to spread them out geographically. We try to cover as many different board areas. We do them by your board areas, actually. And if we can cover one in each, that's how we're going to stretch the dollars to do it.
Okay, then just for paint, is that for playground equipment or anything like that also?
They do painting and stencil. They can do some smaller items, but playground equipment can get a little expensive, so we try to stretch it as best we can.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Lannis. Thank you, Ms. Okowski. Ms. Armin, I just want to let you know that the public comment link is not loading into my system. So if you can send it to my other email, that would be great. And if you can also check it for this particular item to see if there are any public comments before we move on.
There are no public comments for this item.
Thank you, Ms. Armin. Seeing no public comments, we will return back to the board. Seeing no additional requests, Madam Secretary, if you would please open up the machine to vote.
Please vote. Everybody, remember you have to switch into the other meeting. Mr. Blue?
Yes.
Mr. Lannis?
Yes, also, April, it's not popping up on my screen, so I just had to use a verbal. So yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Ware Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Goday?
Yes.
Ms. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Tatman?
Yes.
The motion carries.
The motion carries. Our next item for consideration is a professional service contracts federal. The recommended action is a consideration of a request for the approval of the professional service contracts between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the following: Nearpod in the amount of $154,630 to provide literacy lessons. The funding source is Title IV. Abbott in the amount of $19,639 to provide professional service development and support in creating a ninth grade academy at Barmore High School. The funding source is school redesign. Great Minds in the amount of $25,500 to provide mathematics professional development. The funding source is school redesign. Teaching Lab in the amount of $25,225 to provide ELL professional development. The funding source is school redesign. One Goal in the amount of $45,000 to provide program training and materials. Funding source, school redesign. And Empower Schools in the amount of $100,000 to provide innovative zone strategic funding. Source, school redesign is also the funding source for this particular item. At this moment, I'll entertain a motion. So moved by Mr. Lannis and seconded by Mr. Blue. Are there any additional questions or comments from the board? Mr. Lannis, is your RTS and ORTS, or is that current? Okay, are there any additional comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Armin, if you could let me know about the public comment?
I've just resent it to you. We have one public comment for this item.
Okay, give me one second to pull that up. Okay. Okay, the public comment is from Ms. Maria Harmon. It says, please consider voting no on these contract. Number 1, One Goal Professional Development, $45,000. 2, Great Minds, Eureka Math, $25,500. Abbott Charter, Abbott Center, excuse me, Barmore Ninth Grade Academy, only $29,639. These contracts do not uphold the true meaning of implementing equity in the school district. One Goal is an unnecessary contract with tasks that can be carried out by EBR School District, not a third-party entity. This would be an inefficient use of tax dollars. Great Minds is an undesirable contract because Eureka Math is ineffective and has been proven to be a practical and relevant curriculum to our children. Again, this is an insufficient use of tax dollars. Abbott Center program could be used at every public school with EBR. Why is their priority Barmore High? Let's develop a plan that will be fairly accessible for students who needs it. I will refresh to ensure that there are no additional public comments. Seeing none. We will go back to the board. Are there any additional questions or comments from the board? Seeing no additional requests and comments from the board. Madam Secretary, if you could please open the voting machine.
Mr. Blue?
Yes.
Mr. Lannis?
Yay.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Abstain.
Ms. Ware Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Goday?
Yes.
Ms. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Tatman?
Yes.
The item carries. Our next item for consideration is a architect selection for the University Terrace Buchanan Elementary. It is a consideration of a request for the approval of the Architectural Selection Committee's recommendation of RHH Architects A-PAC to provide architectural design consulting services for the University Terrace School Project Funding Source. Excuse me, Funding Source is the tax plan. At this moment, I'll entertain a motion. So moved by Mr. Tatman and seconded by Mr. Goday. Are there any additional questions or comments from the board? I do not see any questions or comments from the board. I will go to the public comment at this time. And so there was a new comment that came before I read the last motion, but I will just read it into the record for the sake of having it on the record. This is not relevant to the motion that we are speaking on now. It says, this is from Karonda Curly in reference to the last motion. I strongly disagree with the following. One Goal, Great Minds and Abbott Centers, please do not vote something that does not add all children and staff. There are no additional comments for the item that we are currently on. Madam Secretary, if you would please open up the machines.
Back to the board.
I'm sorry, back to the board.
Ms. Ware Jackson has a comment.
Okay, my screen froze again. Thank you, Ms. Armin. Ms. Ware Jackson?
I wanted to ask about the backup on the, it seemed like the backup was kind of light on the University Terrace Buchanan. We used to get the information about the makeup of the committee and who the candidates were and what kind of points they got. And on this one, we didn't, we didn't get any, or I didn't see anything other than this one document with just the recommendation. And I'm just wondering if we can get back to getting some details, more details on these. Thanks.
Ma'am. Yeah, we'll provide more information. This matter was handled by Mr. Williams, who's out of town tonight. I don't believe he's available. I do know that the committee composition, we have that on hand. I don't have it in front of me, but I can send that to the board, so you'll have it, and we can also post it as well. And the decision was made based on the RFP document that went out. So I can get that information for you and send it to you digitally.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Sham, I also have the same question. So it went through the standard RFP procurement process and where the bidder was selected based off of that process? Or was, did the committee have some kind of additional leeway to make selections outside of the traditional standard RFP process?
Well, with, to answer your question simply, the RFP, this went through the RFP process and the scoring requirements in the document we used to make the selection. In any RFP process, there's a committee of people selected to work the process itself, and they could consider any one of a number of factors, including what his scoring requirements are in the document. So to answer your question, in this case, we looked at the document, looked at the scoring requirements, and this firm met those requirements and the selection was made. But I can get you the actual documents so you can see it.
Yeah, that would be extremely helpful. And also, and this is for future reference, not related to this selection, if I can have, and this is for my own education and clarification, if I can have an understanding of what our RFP process looks like, because I mean, in traditional state procurement, most of the time it's lowest bidder. There's no additional selection committees. So that we can have like a policy outline of what our RFP in the district includes, that would be helpful for me to make future decisions. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'll ask our procurement director to send that to the entire board.
Thank you. Seeing Mr. Goday?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide a comment because I see people crossing RFPs with RFQs. RFPs is a request for proposal, and that is covers purchases and all of those types of things where that is governed by state law with the lowest bidder. Architects and other professional services are RFQs, which follows a different process, and it's not a lowest bid win type process. It's looking at qualifications and all of the things that go into that. So not any comment on this particular thing. I think the things you guys are requesting is totally appropriate, and I would like to see it also. But I just wanted to draw the distinction, particularly for the public, between an RFP, which is a low bid process, and an RFQ, which is a selection process where price is only part of the factor because we have no idea what the final cost of the school is going to be or anything like that. But it's looking at qualifications and looking at proposals that they're putting together. So they're two related processes, but different. So I just wanted to make sure everyone's clear on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goday. And I just want to clarify that I'm very clear on that. I was a RFP director for the state of Louisiana for quite some time, so I'm very clear. So I thank you for extending that qualification and clarification to the public. Our next item for consideration, give me one moment, my computer is acting crazy, is a disaster recovery grant.
We take a vote?
Sorry, Mr. Howard, we need to vote.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Yeah, and I was, I wanted to-
Nope, and she has one more question.
Sorry, hold on one second, guys. My computer is doing its own magical-
Go ahead, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Go ahead, Ms. Ware Jackson.
I just wanted to say, oh, in addition to that, thank you, Mr. Goday, for bringing that up for the audience who, you know, didn't know the differences between those two, you know. I appreciate that. And also, with relationship to those differences, I think I'd like to know what our board policy is regarding the committee that's chosen to decide what companies are chosen under these contracts. Just to know, you know, from a board member's point of view or relationship to it. Just knowing what our policy is with regard to who is on those committees that select those different companies. Okay, Mr. Shamlin, when you're getting the information?
Yeah, I'll get you the policies and the procedures. I think what you were referring to may be a process or procedure that we put into practice when we select committees, but I'll get both of those for the board and send to everyone.
Yeah, especially with regard to board members and particular districts and the relationship that-
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ware Jackson. Thank you, Mr. Goday. Thank you, Mrs. Shamlin. And now we will take a vote. Are there any additional questions before we take our vote? Seeing none, Madam Secretary?
Please vote. Mr. Blue?
Yes.
Ms. Lannis?
Yay.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yay.
Ms. Ware Jackson? Ms. Ware Jackson?
Sorry, I'm still on mute. Yes.
Mr. Goday?
Yes.
Ms. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Tatman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Armin. Our next item for consideration is a disaster recovery grant. It is a consideration of a request to accept the recommendation of CSR S. Tillage as the Disaster Recovery Grant Manager fee for services not to exceed $1 million. This is, yeah, that's the recommended action. At this time, I will take a motion. I see Mr. Lannis and seconded by Ms. Collins. Is there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing no request to speak, that was item D4. I will go to public comments to see if there are any additional public comments. And one second, again, my computer is doing its own thing. There are no public comments from this, for this particular item. We will go back to the board. Are there any additional questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Madam Secretary?
Please vote. Mr. Blue?
Yes.
Mr. Lannis?
Yay.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
My computer is in and out too. Yay.
Ms. Ware Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Goday?
Yes.
Ms. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Tatman?
Yes.
The item carries.
Motion carries.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Armin. Our next item for consideration is item D5. It is, once again, my computer, one second. It is item D5. It is a co-op agreement. It is a consideration of a request for the approval of the cooperative agreement between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Capital Area Human Services District Baton Rouge Mental Health Center, Children's Behavior Health Services. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. So moved by Mr. Tatman, seconded by Mr. Lannis. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Collins? Were you raising your voice?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, I can.
Okay, because it's still showing, it looks like it's muted on my side. I need to, for the record, recuse myself from this item.
Ms. Collins is recusing herself from this item. Thank you, Ms. Collins. Are there any additional questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, I will check the public comments. There are no public comments on this item. I will go back to the board. Are there any additional questions or comments from this item? Ms. Collins has recused herself from this item. Seeing none, Madam Secretary?
Please vote. Mr. Blue?
Yes.
Can you press your button, Mr. Blue, or are you frozen?
Got it.
Good, thank you. Mr. Lannis?
Yay.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Collins? Ms. Ware Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Goday? Mr. Goday?
Yes.
Ms. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Tatman?
Yes.
The item carries. Our next item for consideration is item number D6. It is a contract with illuminate education. The item calls for a consideration of a request for the approval of a contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board in illuminate education for a system-wide benchmarking assessment platform. The funding source is federal programs, and it's coming from our CARES Act Monday. Are there any questions or comments from the board? All right, first, I'll entertain a motion, I'm sorry. Mr. Goday moves. Mr. Blue seconds. Now, are there any questions or comments from the board? I do have a question. If there are no additional questions. Ms. Okowski, if you could just clarify, I see that we're utilizing this for benchmark assessment, and we, there has not been any statewide conversations as of yet, that I know of, related to what assessment is going to look like. So how will we be determining what are we utilizing for benchmark assessment? Or how does that fit into like this whole idea of accountability and assessments as it relates to testing?
Sure, thank you for that question. So what this does is this gives us access to a scan and score platform for our early grades who take paper-based tests and computer-based testing for grades 3 and up. And so what we will do is we will use this for diagnostic and placement testing, proficiency testing, and then we'll use it to benchmark kids along the way. As you guys can appreciate now more than ever, it's important for us to know where our students stand upon entry into this next school year. And so this platform allows us to do it virtually and remotely if we should need to. But again, for those younger grades who need the- But again, for those younger grades who need the paper and pencil, it gives us a scan and score platform. A teacher can make their own test on it and can input it in there, and it can mimic the computer-based testing items that they would see on the LEAP test. Or we can pull from their bank of over 500 pre-made tests, or 65,000 test items, all aligned to Louisiana curriculum, and the four content areas and standards in the content areas.
Thank you. And once this is, once this meeting is over, if you would engagement a conversation related to school assessment and what happens either way, or how we engage is based off of what's happening, that would be appreciated. Thank you so much.
Sure, just let me know.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments from the board? Mr. Alanis, is that a current? Go ahead.
Yes, Ms. Okowski, just for the record, this is paid for with the CARES Act funding that we're receiving, correct?
Yes, sir, this is an eligible expenditure out of there, and it will pay for it for this year.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alanis. So are there any additional questions or comments from the board? Seeing no additional questions or comments from the board, I will check. Ms. Jones, is that you telling me that there are no comments for item D6? I'm sorry, I see that, but I'm not sure if I'm reading it correctly. I will refresh just in case. Thank you, Ms. Jones. So we'll go back to the board. Are there any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary.
Please vote.
Mr. Blue?
Yes.
Mr. Alanis?
Yay.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yay.
Ms. Ward Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Bernard? Ms. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Bernard? Thank you. Mr. Tatman?
Yes.
This is Mr. Godey, I vote yes also.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Godey. The motion carries.
Shame on you, Ms. Armin. Next item for consideration is item number D7. It is the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire. It is a consideration of a request for the approval of the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire as required for the 2019-2020 financial audit of the East Baton Rouge Paris School System. This is brought forth by Mr. Crochet. I'll entertain a motion at this time. So moved by Mr. Godey. Seconded by Mr. Blue. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Alanis?
Yes, Mr. Crochet, are you available?
Yes, sir.
You know, we don't get to see you much these days, so I just wanted to tell you, we appreciate all the hard work that you do.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Thank you, Ms. Alanis, thank you, Mr. Crochet. Seeing no additional questions or comments from the board, seeing that Ms. Jones is telling me that D7 also has no public comments, we will go back to the board. Are there any additional questions or comments from the board? Seeing no additional questions or comments from the board, Madam Secretary.
Please vote.
Mr. Blue?
Yes.
Mr. Alanis?
Yay.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Collins? Ms. Collins?
Yay.
Ms. Ward Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Godey?
Yes.
Ms. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Tatman?
Yes.
The item carries. Our last item for consideration is the D8. It is a, excuse me, I'm going back and forth between screens. It is a 2021 healthcare and ancillary benefits. It is a consideration it is a consideration of a request for the approval slash authorization of the following. Proposed 2021 healthcare rates for active employees, non-Medicare and Medicare-eligible retirees participating in the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Louisiana administered medical plans for the Core and Buy Up. Proposed 2021 healthcare rates and plan design changes for active non-Medicare and Medicare-eligible retirees participating in the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Louisiana administered medical plan for Community Blue. Proposed 2021, 2022 healthcare rates for the Medicare retirees participating in the Humana Medicare Advantage HMO and PPO plans. Proposed 2021 salary monthly fee to continue HRIS system administration of all benefits for active non-Medicare and Medicare-eligible retirees. Authorized superintendent staff to negotiate and execute the 2021 contract renewal with the wage works healthy equity for flexible spending size copula administration. Authorized superintendent to negotiate and execute the 2021 contract for stop-loss insurance coverage. And there's an amendment, excuse me, for the approval of express groups programs Rational May Save on SP Advanced Opioid Affordable Care Act, HIV prevention coverage, and HIV care value program. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. I see a motion by Mr. Alanis, and a second. I can't see everyone's screen. Seconded by Ms. Godey. Mr. Godey, excuse me. Ms. Collins, do you have a question or comment? You're still muted.
Gotcha, ready.
Okay, sorry, huge delay on my side. Question as to the contract that district has with Blue Cross Blue Shield and the contract that we have with Mercer. When is it time to review those and consider for renewal?
Okay, Ms. Collins, we do have a PowerPoint presentation. If that's okay with you guys.
And if they could just answer those, if I can-
Yes, ma'am.
Get them answered to those questions. I ain't gonna have too many other questions, because every time I ask questions, I just kind of, you know, it's like, what else? So I'm not gonna waste y'all's time this year. I just want to know when we can revisit some stuff. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Aaron Burkhart. He's an actuarial with Mercer. And also Angie O'Brien, she's a pharmacy specialist, and they should be on the line right now.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear and see me? Excellent. I appreciate the opportunity to present to you, and we'll be talking about the employee benefits. I believe Sheng was gonna pull up the presentation and share the screen for us to walk through. Excellent, thank you. You can go to the next slide, please. So what we want to talk about is the benefit plan. So on the self-funded medical plans, which are offered to the actives and retiree plans, we're proposing a premium increase of 9.9% on those plans due to some kind of trend expected for next year and lower headcount. And we'll get into more details on the later slide. As for the Community Blue Plan, the idea here with the big decrease is kind of realigning that plan to help meet some employee needs based on feedback we receive, and that plan was put in place last year. One of my other colleagues will go into some of these ESI programs on a more detailed basis, but the purpose of these programs are to help manage expected spend with pharmacy. Finally, the Medicare Advantage Plans with Humana are up for renewal.
If I may, I'm sorry, Mr. Burkhart. If I may, and I don't mean to interrupt your presentation, and I just want to clarify with my colleague, Ms. Collins. Ms. Collins, your concern is not necessarily about the details of this particular plan, but when we as a district has an opportunity to revisit our contract with this provider as a collective, is that correct?
That is correct. In particular, Mercer. And I know that we are a self-funded district, but Blue Cross manages. And I just want to make sure, you know, I've been doing research, and I've always expressed that I want to make sure we doing the best we can. And I was more than upset at my own oversight. I'm glad I do participate in the same plans that our employees receive. And without going into any detail, I was a bit perturbed by a bill I received based on some changes from the previous year. And I know that the concerns I lift up, that shouldn't have happened. But there's neither here nor there. Thank you very much for lifting up my question again. I just want to get a better understanding of the nature of the relationship and when it can be revisited. You know, when is the contract renewal up?
Right, so I don't know if that's gonna be Mr. Mercer or someone from the collective staff. If you guys could engage Ms. Collins in relations to her concerns about the relationship and as our contractual obligations, and when will we as a board can revisit that? I'm not sure. And that's not to interrupt your presentation, Mr. Mercer, but it just as an efficiency point, so that my colleague's question can be answered. So if someone from the staff can engage Ms. Collins in this question, that would be helpful.
December of 2021, I believe, is when the Mercer contract comes up for renewal. I'm not sure about Blue Cross Blue Shield. I can get that information for you.
I think Mercer has that information. If, Mimi, if you're available, don't you have the contract ending date for Blue Cross?
Yes, it's a three-year contract, but it can be revisited annually. But it's 2021.
Thank you. Thank you, Mimi, and thank you, Mr. Mercer and Mr. Crochet. Ms. Collins, does that answer your concern?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. Are there any additional questions or concerns related to this item from the board? All right, seeing none, I will go to pub, Mr. Godey? Oh, that's, oh. Mr. Godey, is that a new request? Mr. Godey?
Yes, are we gonna go through the presentation?
All right, if you would like to hear the presentation, yes, but the presentation was not relevant to Mrs. Collins's question, so if there are any members who need to hear the presentation? Okay, do you need to hear the presentation, Mr. Godey?
I think the public and I would like to see the presentation prepared by Mercer. Yes.
All right, all right, Mr. Mercer, if you will continue your presentation. Sorry for the confusion and the interruption.
Yeah, no problem, not at all. Glad to. You can go to the next slide, please. All right, and we can go one more. So as a reminder, Ms. Collins pointed out, right, the plan is self-funded. What that means, right, is the school system pays the claims when the employees or the retirees go visit the doctor or the hospital. Blue Cross Blue Shield really administers or processes those claims, but it really comes from the school district's budget. So as far as the projected budget for 2021 goes, the projected number is 67.6 million, which is a 9.9% or $6.1 million increase over 2020. There are a couple of main drivers I want to call out that's driving the increase. The first, as you follow in part of the national news, is unfortunately, the medical environment in the United States is highly inflationary. It's not uncommon to see many plans increase at four to eight percent per year annually with medical and pharmacy trend combined. So that, you know, that's one cost driver which, you know, far exceeds workers' earnings, general inflation. Another item is more specifically to do with the premium that's being brought in relating to the headcount that's been on the plan. So if you were to look at 2019 versus 2018, the total aggregate costs have actually been pretty steady, which is wonderful, not seeing maybe some of that trend that we might expect. But unfortunately, headcount has dropped over the course of 2019 that was enrolled in the medical plan. And, right, the premium is charged per an employee. So every employee has a contribution, and then the district pays a portion of everybody who's enrolled. So as headcount drops, but if costs stay kind of flat, you have less revenue coming in to cover those costs as, you know, your revenue kind of decreases. And so ultimately, that's another cost driver that we have is just making up for the fact that we didn't see costs decrease as enrollment decreased. It kind of stayed flat. You can go to the next slide, please. The original increase was as high as 16.5%. And then through some plan design changes that we'll talk about next, those ESI management changes. And looking more aggressively at some of our trend assumptions, we're able to bring that down to 9.9. Can you go to the next slide, please? So really only the medical plan changes that are being proposed are on the Community Blue Plan. The Core and the Buy-Up Plan will stay the same. So the Community Blue Plan was introduced last year, and the idea when it was introduced is we're gonna offer the best benefit on this plan or maybe the lowest deductible, right? The $500 deductible is lower than what was on the Buy-Up and the Core Plan. And, but you'd have to go to this narrow network, the Community Blue network that Blue Cross Blue Shield offers. But because the plan design is so rich, right, the deductible is so low, the contributions for that plan were, ended up being higher than the Core Plan's contributions. They are lower than the Buy-Up for a lower deductible, but they're higher than the Core, which is where the majority of East Baton Rouge's employees are enrolled. So some of the feedback on this plan was, I'd really like to have a lower cost option. So one of the ideas we had is take this plan and make it near the Core Plan design, but offer it on the Community Blue where we could recognize the full impact of the savings from the narrow network into the contributions. So with the savings in the plan design, the contributions are able to be considerably lower than that that's offered on the Core Plan currently. So for those that are on the Core Plan now, they'll have an opportunity to basically have the same deductible, same out-of-pocket max they have today, but a much lower contribution if they're willing to use the narrow network and share those savings with the district or with the school board. Can you go to the next slide, please? So here's the proposal for the contributions on the Buy-Up Plan. So what you're looking at, I guess, on a per-month basis is about 1,881 for an employee only that equates to $226 per year. One of the things I'll call out, because it is kind of noticeable as you go through, you may notice the employee-only total premium drops, but then for the dependent tiers, it goes up. The reason for that is every three to five years, from an actuarial standpoint, we like to evaluate and make sure we're capturing the appropriate cost for those tiers. And over time, those ratios between the tiers and the plans, you know, may not represent the actual cost for that tier, and we have to realign those. So as we realign those for 2021, to be more accurate. Now, I want to emphasize that doesn't affect the employee contributions. It's more an internal budgeting standpoint for the school system to be able to make sure you're budgeting appropriately for everyone who's enrolled in that particular tier. You can go to the next slide, please. On the Core Plan, the contribution would go from 87 to 95 on the employee only that equates to $8.61 per month or $103 per year. Can you go to the next slide? On the Community Blue Plan, you see a considerable decrease on those contributions of $73 per month or $877 less in contributions per year. So if you're someone on the Core Plan now, you'll be able to get the same plan design or same deductible and so forth, but save almost $500 per year in contributions if you're willing to use the narrow network plan. You can go to the next slide, please. All right, the next few slides are on the non-Medicare retiree piece. So for them, the Buy-Up, it's the same percentage increase of 9.9, which would equate to $41.21 per month. You can go to the next slide. On the Core, the increase would be about $24.92 per month for retiree only. And on the Community Blue Plan, where we are now, it would be a decrease of $117 per month, almost. Keep going. Next slide's for the Medicare retirees. So on the Buy-Up Plan, the contributions would go up $42.60 per month. Next slide. On the Core Plan, the contributions would go up $33.72 per month for retiree only. Next slide. And then on the Community Blue, the plans would decrease about $60 per month. And then for those that are on the Core Plan, they could save almost $309 annually by moving. You can go to the next slide, please. So the recommendation would be the 9.9% increase that includes those changes to the Community Blue Plan and some of the pharmacy savings that we're gonna talk about next with one of my other colleagues. And then the numbers kind of show the savings that are brought about by those changes. So you can go to the next slide, and I'm gonna hand it over to my pharmacy colleague.
Good evening. My name is Melanie Carlson. I know it shows Andrea Bryant on the screen. I am presenting this evening. So I am a senior pharmacy consultant- So I am a Senior Pharmacy Consultant in Mercer's National Pharmacy Practice and have been with Mercer almost nine years. My role with East Baton Rouge Paris School System is to provide strategic support, guidance, recommendations for the pharmacy benefits that are offered to your employees and their dependents. Also, on the Mercer team is one of our pharmacists, Andrea Bryant, who provides the clinical support, and she was unable to be on the call today, so I am filling in with her. So I'll spend just the next few minutes talking about five programs, pharmacy programs that are offered by Express Scripts, your current pharmacy benefit manager. Mercer has reviewed these programs and vetted them out and are making recommendations for the five programs that I will walk through. And so I'll walk through each one just at a high level, just to give you some highlights for each one. Just a couple of comments before I dive into that. As Erin mentioned earlier, the overall theme or intent of these pharmacy programs is to save East Baton Rouge money with minimal impact to your members and to provide ongoing management of the plan. And I also wanted to just call out that your plan is very, your pharmacy benefit plan is very well managed, and, which was demonstrated with the 2019 overall prescription drug cost decreasing in comparison to the 2018 drug cost. The first program is called Rational Med. So again, these are all programs provided by Express Scripts. This program maximizes or integrates data from various sources, so the medical, the pharmacy, the lab data, and uses all of that data to identify and alert providers and pharmacists of any potential safety issues, any gaps in care, any other health-related concerns is the whole intent of that, putting that program into place. There is a fee for that program to EBR, which amounts to $30,000 in year one. Year two is $42,000. There is also an ROI, a return on investment guarantee associated with that of two to one, which generates estimated total pharmacy savings of $176,000 in year one, $201,000 in year two. Okay, the next program is called Save On SP. This is a program that maximizes the assistance available from pharma manufacturers to lower overall plan cost. And it identifies certain specialty drugs as non-essential benefits, looks for those co-pay assistance programs, and therefore saves. Those programs will help your members as well as EBR, so both the plan and the members to experience significant cost savings. There is not a fee for this program. The structure is that it's a shared savings program, so whatever savings are realized, 25% of those savings would go to Save On and ESI. So the expected return on investment, there's not a guarantee associated with it, but the expected return on investment is annual plan savings of about $774,000. Okay, next slide. The next program is the Advanced Opioid Management Program. This program is another type of a safety program that helps avoid abuse or misuse of opioids, using various strategies and methods at the pharmacy, as well as the physician and through member channels. The fee for this to EBR is the 39 cents PM/PM. That's about $47,000 per year for that program. There's not an ROI guarantee. It's not really meant to be a savings. It's really meant to avoid that misuse or abuse, avoid or reduce ER visits and hospitalizations. Okay, the next program is the Affordable Care Act, or ACA HIV Prep Coverage Program. This is not really an optional program. This is a program that's required for any non-grandfathered plans, such as East Baton Rouge. So this isn't something you really decide or not decide. It is a requirement for being non-grandfathered. The purpose of this program is to allow coverage at a zero-dollar cost share for patients who are taking certain HIV medications for prevention of HIV versus treatment of HIV. Okay, next slide. The last program is called the HIV Care Value Program. This program is meant to avoid or mitigate any potential increases in trend that may result from implementing that coverage requirement that we just talked about, the HIV Prep Program. So it's to just monitor and mitigate any trend there and making sure that there's a positive impact on the adherence of the drugs. And so, associated, there's no fee with that, but associated with that is a cost trend cap that's specific to EBR. And ESI has set that trend cap at 6%. So again, there's no fee, but that is something that we would also recommend EBR consider implementing for 2021. Any questions about any of the pharmacy programs?
The board is clear as far as questions. Anyone have any questions or comments for our presenters, especially related to our last one with the Express Scripts Pharmacy Programs? All right, seeing none, is there any additional pieces to your presentation that you would like to present to us?
We just have a few more slides on some of the ancillary things. It'll be pretty quick. You go two more slides down for Humana. So this is for the Medicare-eligible retirees on the Medicare Advantage Plan. Some great news is we got a two-year rate guarantee from them with a decrease in premium. So the retiree contributions will be able to stay flat, and there'll be a small savings to the school board. You can go to the next slide. So, yep, same with PPO. You can go to the next slide, please. So savings about $194,000, and it's a two-year guarantee. So good news there. You can go to the next slide. So a few more of the ancillary pieces for the FSA. The FSA contract is up, but the fee typically doesn't get, the renewal doesn't really come until sometime in late Q3 or to Q4. So authorize the superintendent and staff to negotiate that when that comes in. Can you go to the next slide? Go to the next one. Same with the stop-loss. Stop-loss fees are typically not finalized until closer to the end of 2020. So authorize, again, the superintendent and the staff to negotiate and execute that coverage when that renewal is ready. You can go to the next slide. Go to the next one. So Solerix, currently, East Baton Rouge uses Solerix for their benefits and information system through Humana. Unfortunately, Solerix and Humana's partnership's coming to an end. So that service needs to be transitioned. MetLife, who currently, East Baton Rouge uses for some voluntary benefits, offers a partnership with Solerix. So we're recommending using, going through the partnership with MetLife, effective July 1st of this year. And so unfortunately, a mid-year conversion is needed. They are offering no rate fee increase for the mid-year change, but then a 25-cent fee increase as of 2021. Can you go to the next piece? I think that is it. So I'll turn it back over. If you have any questions for me or for Melanie, please let us know.
Thank you guys so much for your presentation. I don't see any additional questions from our board. So again, thank you, Mr. Mercer and Ms., well, not Ms. Bryant, but that's what the name says. Thank you guys so much for your presentation and your time. And I know if there are additional questions, the board members will get to the appropriate folks so that we can ask other questions. I just refreshed the comments from the public, and I don't see, do we have a motion, Ms. Arman?
Yes, Mr. Lanis and Mr. Goday?
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure. I just refreshed public comment, and I don't see any additional comments. I will check one last time to make sure. All right, Ms. Jones, if you wanna double-check for me, I don't see any on my end after refreshing. So we will go back to-
I don't see any, Mr. Howard.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jones, thank you, Ms. Arman. We will go back to the board. Are there any additional questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Madam Secretary.
Please vote. Mr. Blue?
Yes.
Mr. Lanis?
Yay.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yay.
Ms. Wera Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Goday?
Yes.
Ms. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Tatman?
Yes.
The motion carries.
The motion carries. Thank you. Our next item for consideration is not an item for consideration. We are, the announcement of meetings and dates. Give me one second. My computer is going to doing its thing again. All right, the announcement of meetings. The Lee High School Renaming Committee Public Forum to be held July 13, 2020, at 6:00 PM at the Professional Development Center, PC, 3,000 North Sherwood Forest Boulevard. Oversight Committee meetings to be held July 14, 2020, at 5:00 PM at the IRC, 1022 South Foster Drive. Some or all board members may attend. And the regular board meeting is scheduled for this Thursday, well, next Thursday, July 16, 2020, at 5:00 PM at the Professional Development Center, also known as the PDC, at 3,000 North Sherwood Forest Boulevard. That is the end of our announcements of meetings, and I move that this meeting is adjourned.